Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I have a motion for the regular minutes of April 22nd, 2019? We're still doing some cleanup.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a motion for the executive minutes of September 9th and September 23rd, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
These already been discussed in executive, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome all on this nor'easter night. And it's been a little time in between meetings since it was a five Monday and we're on a Wednesday, so got a lot of catching up to do. One person that we don't have, Sydney audience today, who has been here for quite a while is Christine Lee, who has been covering council meetings for many years and has taken a job in Pennsylvania, working for Adali out there. Her official last day with Madison Eagle is this Friday, so if you happen to see Christine, wish her well, and we thank her for many years of coverage and certainly wish her the best of luck. And I received a letter from Connie Stober, who, she and her husband Hank have moved out of town, and I want to share this letter. Connie was the first woman ever elected in Madison to any office, elected in 1971, joined the council in 72. She has also had a quite extensive volunteer career in many aspects, including, I think she served on the health department, or border health rather, Affordable Housing Corporation, and a host of others, and she wrote a very nice letter, so here. "After 56 years in Madison, the number one town in New Jersey, it is time for Hank and me to move on to the next chapter of our lives. Our feelings are mixed. Although we look forward to comforts of our new home, we are sad to depart from Madison. We are happy as we reflect on Madison as it was in September 1963 when we arrived. The town it is, and the town it is today. It was a good town then, and it's a great town now. I am happy to have been able to participate in much of that positive change. I could not have done without the support and encouragement of my life partner Hank, as well as many friends and colleagues who have joined and guided me. So we move on, leaving Madison a better place than we found it. We are confident that it is in good, capable hands of the residents who love the town as we have. After all, it is the people who make Madison the great town it is. With gratitude, Connie Stober." So it was a very nice note, and she really has left her mark in our town. A few other things that were going on over the last couple of weeks. On October 3rd, we dedicated two pavers of the Walk of Veterans at Condorso Park for Leslie and Vincent Hines, brothers that are relatively new residents to Madison but now feel like really part of our family. As Vince said, he truly loves Madison, he's never felt a welcoming community in his 95 years as he feels now. They both served in the Navy in World War II with Vince, as we saw here a few months ago, as part of the Normandy invasion. Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill attended a ceremony to personally thank the Hines brothers for their service, and I want to thank Peg and Ray Cody for sponsoring the two pavers that were put there for them. And then on following Monday, October 7th, I present a proclamation at the corner of Waverly Place and Main Street, our busiest intersection, to Police Chief Datchison for putting on the brakes on Fatalities Day urging everyone, drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists, to use caution year-round to help reduce pedestrian fatalities. And, drink of water here, since I can't get the words out right. And of course Bottle Hill Day happened, I'm sure we'll hear some more about Bottle Hill Day. And I think this year's Bottle Hill Day was at least the fifth consecutive best one ever, because they just seem to keep on getting better and better. The weather was perfect, the crowd incredible, the music at the four stages so impressive, and with the lines I saw everywhere, especially at the food vendors, when I was very hungry and couldn't get a bite to eat, wouldn't keep on schedule. And I think everyone was happy with every booth and every organization, everyone on stage. It was just an incredible day. And, you know, all that could not be possible with the endless work that goes into it, as a kind of segue into our Employees of the Month for October. Now our two Employees of the Month, we have, or you have three Employees of the Month, two are here right now. Director of Business Development, Lisa Ellis, and now she's going to be upset because... And Lieutenant Joe Longo of the Madison Police Department, they were selected for their dedication, commitment, and hard work, planning, organizing, the operations, and safety of a multifaceted Bottle Hill Day, making it a huge success. Over 10,000 enjoyed that day, I don't know what the final count was, but, you know, the 10,000 that show up, enjoy it for the six, seven hours, but there's months of work that goes into making that happen. Lisa's amazing in the coordination of the music, the vendors, the food, the signage, and the list goes on. And Joe Longo is dedicated to making sure everyone is safe by coordinating neighboring towns, the sheriff's office. And while we all enjoy that day, as it kicks off at 10:00 a.m., but we don't feel that those hours that we're put in leading up to it, especially on that day in particular, I think they start at 4:00 a.m., getting everything ready and making sure it's all in place. There's no Santa elves to make that happen at night, so. So for Lisa and Joe, congratulations, and I urge everyone to congratulate them as you go out and see them as Employees of the Month. And then we have one other Employee of the Month, Communications Technology Coordinator, Michael Pelissier. Also, a major part of working behind the scenes on Bottle Hill Day and getting around with a scooter to make sure everything's in place. His commitment and outstanding work is not only on, for things like Bottle Hill Day, has resulted in the Borough of Madison being recognized as the best print media, Class B municipality, in the 50th Annual Municipal Public Information Contest sponsored by the Rutgers Center for Government Services of the New Jersey Municipal Management Association and New Jersey State League of Municipalities. So it's great to have people recognize the effort that Michael has been putting in there. Our communications have gone up so, so much in the time Michael has come on, I was honored to be interviewed yesterday in an article that will be in a Rutgers publication about our excellent communications. So Michael, congratulations. And also want to recognize an Anniversary of the Month, October, Ron Meyer of the Electric Department, for his 20th anniversary, which occurred on October 4th. And now we'll move on to reports from committees. Public Safety, Council President Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, October is Fire Prevention Month. Madison firefighters will be conducting fire safety programs throughout the month for our pre-K through 8th grades, as well as our seniors. And this month, the Fire Department responded to 31 general alarms, 15 still alarms, and 14 investigations, for a total of 90 calls. And the Fire Department this past month has provided mutual aid to Morristown, Chatham, Chatham Township, Floren Park, and Morristown Township. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety and Borough Clerk, Mrs. Vitale.
Finance.
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 I'm also doing some random, this extra week in between throws off my whole routine, sorry. Finance and Borough Clerk.
Thank you.
This is Vitale.
Administration has been working hard on the 2020 budget. They're almost done with the department heads and discussing their operating and capital budgets. From there, the administration will work with the engineer on the five-year capital plan. Administration, personnel, and finance met to review the annual State of New Jersey Best Practices checklist. The expanded list includes 84 questions on borough operations, policies, and practices. The document will be presented at the next council meeting on Monday, October 28th. Utility billing. Tonight, we will hear a presentation on a new utility payment system for residents. The new system includes many great payment options, including paperless billing, auto pay, and budgeted billing. The budgeted billing is great for seniors and others who want to have a predictable monthly utility payment. We hope to have the system up and running by April 2020. Finally, yesterday, the Finance Department wired a payment of $3,492,826 to the Madison Board of Education. This is the monthly payment of the school property taxes. The school taxes total over $44 million for the 2019-2020 school year. Yesterday, the Borough also made a debt payment of $1,726,612,000. This payment is for the bonds that were issued to pay the 2008 for the new public safety building and the renovations at the Hartley Dodge Memorial. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, let's see if I can get this one right. Utilities, Mr. Rowe.
Nice and short, thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the Electric Department, on the September 26th, Jim Trimble led an effort that was staffed by the entire electric field team to have all the meters in the Madison Commons upgraded to our new smart meters, which Mr. Burnett will be talking about later. On October 13th, the standby crew was called out to an alarm at the James Park substation. One of the redundant feeder lines that JCPN L uses to deliver electricity to our utility had tripped. They were able to restore the service without any interruption that evening to our customers. The next day, JCPN L informed us they needed to take down the same feeder line to do additional work on a bad potential transformer, which it turned out was the cause of the previous day's incident. Late last night, JCPN L was able to replace three potential transformers to correct that problem, and both feeder lines are now back in service. And from the Water Department, our hydrant flushing program has been completed. The only ones out of the 620 or so that are out there that are not complete are on Drew. They will only be done when students are not in session. The new eight-inch water line has been installed and tested on Highland and Grove, and 75% of the associated service lines to homes have been completed. A new eight-inch water main with new services has been started on Community Place. All main connections and services should be finished by the end of October. And last, on Thursday, October 10th, one of our meter readers alerted the Water Department to running water on both sides of the street at Ross Court. The department discovered there was a break in a six-inch main at the location. Within two hours, the area had been excavated, the pipe was taken care of, and there was little or no interruption to service. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, Bottle Hill Day went very well. Secondly, leaves will start to be picked up next week and continue through December. The Department of Public Works, Mechanics Department continues to service and repair borough vehicles and equipment. The Parks Department has been cutting, trimming, and weeding, lining the recreation fields, watering the flower baskets, and winterizing the sprinkler systems. In terms of roads, the DPW has patched the Madison Library sidewalk, paved stink holes, delivered barricades and cones, and delivered the pickup, the farmer's market trailer. From Engineering, Cefeli and Sun Contracting will start sidewalk curb and drainage improvements Monday on Community Place. Tilcon, New York resurfaced Wisteria, Linwood, and part of Crestview, Lawrence, Laurel, Nordling, and Del Barton last week. Denville Line Striping will finish the pavement markings on the above, did that yesterday. Matina and Sun Utility Contractors completed Grove Street water main replacement last week and is working on service replacements this week. It's likely this project will be completed by Monday. Water main replacement on Community Place was finished last week. In terms of the sewer, the National Water Main Cleaning Company completed lining of sanitary sewer mains on Beet, Rose, Cedar, and Pine Acres this week, with the exception of three offset pipe segments which may need open-cut repairs prior to lining. Two electric motors at the Candlewood Pump Station overheated last weekend due to pump binding and required emergency call-outs. The Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza restoration will be rebid in the next two weeks, and the boilers at the Hartley Dodge and the new boilers at the Museum of Early Trade were both placed in service the first week in October. From the Environmental Commission, the townwide, excuse me, the townwide yard sale is going to be on Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. If you want to, you can go to tap into, and for $10, your name and your address will be added to a list of people that are having garage sales that day. So hopefully we'll have good weather. The M E C is also working with the DPW to do pumpkin recycling. Yes, folks, you don't have to leave your pumpkins for the squirrels. When you're, DPW is working with a local farmer, and they will be accepting used pumpkins as long as they're not painted on or have wax coating on them. You can, starting a week after Halloween, you can bring them down to DPW, we'll collect them, and somebody's, it could be, you know, your T-bone steak in a couple of months. So, that's about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start by talking about seniors. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee is working with the county's program administered by NorwestCAP called Friendship at Heart, that administers the telephone reassurance program and visits homebound seniors by recruiting volunteers for the programs, identifying Madison clients who would benefit from the programs, assuring that the calling system based in the Madison Senior Center has adequate resources for program coordination and reporting. The latest SCAC meeting, Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, was held at Rexford Tucker and was very successful. The residents really appreciated knowing what's happening in town. At the Senior Center, a Twilight Done Right program was held on October 11th with a large audience. There was a panel of experts in finance, law, home care, and other things that, to the group about preparing, talked to the group about preparing for end-of-life events. Triton 55-plus Coalition, our team met with, on October 3rd, met with Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill in our trustees room for about 30 minutes to talk about the growth and needs of seniors, to seek help in bringing attention to the needs of seniors and solutions at the federal level. She was very receptive and very attentive. From the Director of Business Development and the Downtown Development Commission, let me talk a little bit about Bottle Hill Day. They prepared a tremendous, Suzie, the chairperson, for DDC and Lisa. Downtown Business Development Manager prepared a big thank-you letter for everybody. I'm not going to read that letter, just a couple of excerpts if I can. On behalf of the DDC and the Madison Main Street Foundation, we want to thank everyone who participated, whose participation made Bottle Hill Day 2019 such an overwhelming success. Over 275 businesses and nonprofit groups lined Waverly Place, Central Avenue, and Kings Road. Excuse me, paper's sticking together. The event would not be possible without the tremendous support of Mayor Robert Connolly and the Madison Borough Council. We cannot thank them enough. If you have any great photos of Bottle Hill Day, please send them to them. We would love to have them for future publicity. You can mail them to ddc@rosenet.org. There's a limit of five megabytes per email, please, and the names of the people and other of the photos would be very helpful. Please forward any suggestions, thoughts, ideas, or ways to improve Bottle Hill Day to ddc@rosenet.org. Every year, we evaluate what worked and what did not work. Your thoughts will greatly enrich the whole process. Just now on to another topic, just two weeks left before the Madison Farmers Market, located at Central Avenue between Cook and Main Street, from 2:00 to 7:00 every Thursday through October 24th. So there's one tomorrow and then one on the 24th. In addition to the great lineup of vendors, the market features weekly live musical performances. New, there's something new this year. The DDC will be holding an indoor-outdoor holiday market for six weeks, November 7th, 14th, 21st, and December 5th, 12th, and 19th. The market will be held at the Madison Community Arts Center at 10 Kings Road. The hours will be from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's a great place to shop for holiday gifts and items for holiday entertaining. The Office of Business Development has assumed responsibility for all Borough of Madison parking permits, and they're very happy about that. Commuter resident parking permit renewal applications have been sent to all current 2019 holders, who will have until December 1st to complete the process. After this date, remaining permits will be made available to those on the waiting list while available. Questions regarding parking can be sent to parking@rosenet.org. Merchant and employee and residential renewal applications will be sent before mid-November. The Chamber of Commerce, scarecrows will be displayed on Waverly Place from October 17th to November 1st. The Chamber's Halloween Parade and Magic Show is scheduled for Saturday, October 26th, from 12:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. The 2020 Taste of Madison is scheduled for Monday, March 23rd, at the Brook Lake Country Club. The 2020 Madison Camp Fair is scheduled for March 15th. At the Madison Community Arts Center, there's lots of upcoming events. The League of Women Voters will hold a Candidates Forum on October 23rd at the Madison Community Arts Center. Giermal Gil will hold the second fundraiser for the Colombian Society on October 26th. The memorial service for the owner of Studio Yoga on October 27th, and they're expecting over 250 guests. November 1st is the tailgate fundraiser for the Madison Education Foundation. The first children's theater production will be held on November 8th. KITZ Interactive Theater presents Fun and Frolic in Colonial Times and Pioneer Travels. The improv comedy show, The Flip Side, is on Saturday, November 9th. In discussion, a holiday fundraiser, Rudolph, performed by professional voice-over actors, and an evening of stand-up comedy. The Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, the museum has begun the investigation of interior finishes of the museum with funding for the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust and Madison Open Space. For MACA, nothing to report. The Recreation Advisory Committee, the winter season registration is open for the Madison Basketball Association and Madison Wrestling. Links to both programs can be found on the Program Information and Registration tab on the Recreation Department page at rosenet.org. Tryouts for MBA travel programs are ongoing through, throughout the month. Registration for the 2020 5th through 8th Grade Ski Club is also open and can be found at rosenet.org. Five chips will be made to Mount Peter with the potential for a sixth bonus trip. This year's first trip will take place on Friday, January 17th. Space in the program is limited, so please register as soon as you can. Registration will be closed on Friday, November 1st. Repairs and renovations continue across multiple fields. Work is ongoing at Lucy D., Myrtle, and Howard, and has been completed at both Rosedale Fields. We're already looking forward to improved field conditions on opening day 2020. Thanks to everybody, for all of the coaches and volunteers with their continued cooperation for the Background Check Program. The program is important to the safety of our participants, and at present, we have over 400 approved coaches in the database. Mayor's Wellness Committee, nothing to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health, Ms. Cohen.
From the Madison Health Department, Madison residents may take advantage of free flu vaccines offered Monday, October 21st, at the Madison Civic Center from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. The vaccine is regular strength with protection against four strains of flu virus. Annual rabies clinics, sponsored by the Madison Health Department, are to be held in Chatham Township on Saturday, November 2nd, at the Public Works Facility, located at 405 Southern Boulevard, Chatham Township, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. And Saturday, December 7th, at the Madison Public Works Garage at 34 John Avenue. Residents are encouraged to take advantage of this free vaccination for their dogs or cats. 2020 pet licensing requires that the rabies vaccine duration of immunity be good through at least October 31st, 2020. After 28 years of service, Madison Health Department Senior Registered Environmental Health Specialist Ben Semara is retiring, and there is a new health educator. I've already got her, she's in contact with the schools, will be doing stuff for Red Ribbon Week, and she'll be reaching out to Lisa and Michael to get some community speakers and events going on in conjunction with the Borough. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and Petition.
Yes, Mayor. Council received an email from Matt Seeholmes, who's the Director of the American Progressive Bag Alliance regarding the plastic bag policies.
Thank you. Now we're on to our first invitation for discussion, as always, for any newcomers here. This is limited to either the two items on the discussion, agenda discussion, which is Recreation Field User Fees, Recreation Field User Fees, I'm running out of time tonight, or the Automated Meters Utility Bill Pay Platform. And these are the following resolutions that will be consented agenda, which you may comment on, but you will also know what's on the consent agenda, and I apologize, it's a long list for tonight, after an extra week in between. 285, Resolution approving bingo license for the ambulance corps. 286, approving raffle license for Drew University. 287, authorizing medical prescription drug program under the state health benefit program for borough employees. 288 is final payment and change order for Straight and Narrow that did the seal coating at the merchant parking on Green Avenue. And this was in the amount of, the change order is 2,000, for a total of 21,000, 23,100, and is funded through ordinance 2, 2019. Resolution 289, authorizing qualified private community service agreement with Westminster Madison Condominium Association, which is located on Cook Avenue. This is agreements that are for condominiums that have roads, so they get reimbursed for some of the services that are included in other ones' taxes, in everyone's taxes, such as leaf and snow removal. Resolution 290, authorizing spaces in the public parking lot of Civic Center for the Thursday Morning Club for their bizarre Noel, November 14, 15, 16. Resolution 291, amending Resolution 224, which was awarding a contract to Cherry Hill Winter Ford. This amount is not to exceed 52,900, and it's being moved up to 54,000 in this new Something just came in right off the wire, sorry. And that was funded through ordinance 9. Resolution 292, 2019, is awarding contract with Cherry Hill Winter Ford for pickup truck purchase, and this is increased to 40,000, by $768 to 40,257, and this is from ordinance 28, 2019. Resolution 293 is a rental agreement for a portion of Public Safety Complex for AAA Northeast for defensive driving instructions. 294, confirming the membership of Lucas McCory into the Madison Hose Company Number One as a volunteer fireman. 295 is appointing James Posaro to position a part-time fire inspector at the hourly rate of $40 an hour. 296 is amending Resolution 277, purchase of two police vehicles from Bayer Ford in Morristown. Originally, it was through the Cranford Cooperative purchase agreement, and this is going through the Morris County one, same price. And those are two hybrid vehicles. 297 is approving the rebranding and timing of, implementing new branding, and there's a whole background on the branding you can see, and we'll be, you'll start seeing it on printed materials and so on, and just want to make sure that we are the Rose City and forever will be the Rose City, so don't worry if you don't see it on all the branding items. 298, Resolution requesting local government services to approve insertion of a item of revenue, and this is to recognize the $30,000 grant we got for the charging station, so we have to insert that in the budget so we can spend it. Resolution 299, approving transfer of a livery owner's license for Madison LaMizine Service. 300 is authorizing 5K fun run for Saturday, November 23rd, for Tori J. Sabatini PTO. 301 is approving raffle license application for PTSO Madison High School. 302 is approving, authorizing Christmas tree sale at Dodge Field by the Madison Rotary Club, that was going to be picking up the baton from the YMCA. Resolution 303 is authorizing Holiday Market, that was mentioned in the report already, Madison Community Arts Center from November 7th through December 19th. 304 is authorizing raffle licenses for the volunteer ambulance corps. So if you remember all those, you may comment on any one of those in this section. If other comments, we'll comment a little bit later. So anyone wishing to comment on the two agenda items or any of those resolutions, please step forward. Seeing none, I close as part of the meeting, and I rest my voice, and I ask John Hoover as liaison to Recreation.
Well, about 12 to 18 months ago, this council asked the Recreation Advisory Committee to relook at the user fees. to relook at the user fees and see if they were appropriate or whether they should be something else. Dave Carver has a nice presentation. They've done a tremendous job analyzing all of this, preparing it, reviewing it, reviewing it, and reviewing it, and getting approval for it from the Recreation Advisory Committee. So Dave, sorry that we're late, but I'll turn it over to you.
No worries. Thank you, John. I appreciate it. And if you go to the next slide, please. My name is Dave Carver. I'm with the Recreation Advisory Committee. I'd like to cover four things quickly tonight. One, just a quick reminder, what is RAC? Who we are, what we accomplish, review of the management of recreation costs, and really keying in on how do we come up with $1.1 million necessary to reskin the existing turf fields out at the MRC? Come back to what are the decisions we're asking council to make and review our recommendations. I'll try to go through that as quickly as I can. If you go to the next slide, please. So what is RAC? Well, RAC is basically a dozen neighbors who I really enjoy working with. We all have one thing in common. We have a passion for the youth sports programs we're involved in, and we probably spend way too many hours on softball fields, basketball courts, football fields during the season and offseason, all the administrative activities, but everybody finds time to spend a couple hours every month or so to come together at the Recreation Advisory Committee. We work directly with Zach Ellis. I'd like to, by the way, thank Sue Whitehorn, who's here tonight, and Dutch Holland, who's in the back row there, who joined me tonight on a really lousy, nasty night. But thank you all for coming out, and our leader, Zach Ellis, the Rec Director. But working with RAC, we try to make sure there's a consistent approach across all of our programs. John made the comment about coach background checks to make sure everybody working with the kids is in good person. We do our best to make sure our field and our gyms are fully scheduled and no time is wasted, and we don't have two different programs show up at the same place at the same time. We make sure it just works well. Share best practices, resolve common issues, but really work to make sure that our programs complement each other. The same kids are playing softball who are playing soccer. The same kids are playing field hockey who are playing lacrosse. We want to make sure that when they look up, all the programs they're involved with are working very effectively together, and we find the Recreation Advisory Committee is a good way to bring that to life. Next slide, please. So one thing we do is we take full advantage of all the assets we have in the community. We've got over 43 acres of space for active recreation in every nook and cranny of the town. And one thing we know, that residents and taxpayers have an expectation that we maintain and we service these assets appropriately. They make a difference. They're as valuable to the town as the library, or maybe the sewer's a little more valuable, but all these different assets of the town make a difference in our community, and we do our best to keep these things well running. If you go to the next slide, please. And we do it because we've got a pile of kids playing sports in town. Over the last 12-month time period, we just had under 4,200 registrations of boys and girls between K and grade eight, running around in the spring, in the fall, in the winter, the summer. It's either cross-country or wrestling, ski club or field hockey, football or lacrosse, softball or soccer, baseball or basketball. We keep these kids going all year round, and we do our best through all these different volunteer organizations to take full advantage of all these assets we have in our community. Next slide, please. Am I going too fast? Am I doing okay?
You're doing well.
Perfect.
So key here, about almost three years ago, time sure flies, I stood in front of you all and said, here's what the Recreation Committee recommends for the next 10 years. These are our priorities. We've got some to accomplish, some still to do, but we really wanted to look at the way we're managing recreation use fees, and we had this one bold item, is do we want to find a way to transition the existing $20 fee to an all-inclusive recreation fee for everybody who uses borough facilities? That was kind of the catalyst that as time has gone on led to tonight's conversation. Next slide, please. So we want to look specifically at the MRC, and there's a lot of numbers around MRC, and we kind of boiled it down to two things, cash in, cash out. Cash in is a result of field user fees and field rentals. Since we turned on the MRC in 2012, we've accumulated a little over, through 2018, a little over $514,000, almost $514,000, and when 2019 is finished, we'll probably have accumulated a little over $600,000 of cash that's flowed in from the people who use those fields, which is a nice little chunk of change. And a year ago, you decided to reserve $270,000 of those funds for reskining, what we're going to spend in a couple of years, as opposed to debt repayment. One of the things we want to talk about is how else do we cover the reskining in addition to these fees? Cash out. The existing complex is being funded entirely from receipts in the Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. And over the next decade, we kind of looked at for the next 10 years, all our work, there's about $6.350 million will be collected in that particular trust fund. $2.7 million is going to be spent, it's already accounted for, as far as the MRC debt bond repayments, it's about 50/50. About half of it is going to pay off the open space, and that's the 38 or so acres on the other side of the street, leading up into Route 24, kind of the grassy knoll, the woods and everything, all the open space is part of the 49 acres. And the other 50% of it is being spent on the MRC itself, the land underneath the fields, and the completion of the complex was built in 2012. So $2.7 million there, and another $100,000 is being spent on what they call the common area maintenance fee, which I have that right, is basically to keep that road open that goes from Ridge Dale Avenue back into the complex and everything. So that leaves about $3.5 million for the open space and for the council to fund other projects that may come up that meet the areas of open space, recreation, historic preservation. Now, it'll take another three years, then 2033, and then this complex will be paid off lock, stock, and barrel. At that point in time, we've nicely fully paid for a nice 49 acres of open space and recreation space, which different decisions we made, but that's for somebody else's to do 10 or so years from now. Next slide, please. So we also wanted to go beyond just the MRC, that dollars being spent to pay off the MRC, and say, how about all the other money we're spending in town? And by working with Ken O'Brien, our DPW supervisor, and Jim Renette, our CFO, they estimated about $3.25 million a year is being spent just to keep all of our grass fields in good working order. Excuse me one second. In addition, Zach's got another $25,000 or so for above and beyond needs. John mentioned the Little League fields that are being recreated, cleaned up, reskinned, put back in good working order for the spring season. Those are the kind of not major giant improvements, but small things that Zach is managing on a year-to-year basis to keep all of our existing facilities up and running. So when you look at that, plus replacing the turf, we're looking between $3.25 million up to $1 million by the end of the decade, it's being spent just to keep all of our recreation assets across the community up and running. And we started talking about this as the RIC, saying, okay, do we want to look at going above and beyond just paying to use the turf, but covering everything? Now, it was a quite interesting conversation, and a general consensus was, from all the different programs who use the fields, it's going to be very hard to go to all our families and go, you know, your taxes have been paid for all these years, but now we think we'd like to charge you user fees for the grass and the turf fields, and increase the fields and cover more of the costs as possible. And we really agreed as a committee, none of us thought that was going to really hold much water with our communities and the families we were working with. They're used to things being done one way, and to change it that dramatically really wouldn't fly. So we brought our focus really back to, how do we cover the turf? That's kind of the newest asset in town. We know the cost attached to that. What do we want to do to cover the need to replace the turf in a couple of years? Next slide, please. So the decisions, what are we asking the council to make? Is what is the right mix of taxpayer funding versus user fees to reskin, maintain the turf field? With regards to user fields, what's the recommended amount and why? And finally, we know you're talking to the Board of Ed about adding another turf field. How do the decisions we recommend today, or the decisions you make now, how do they get changed or impacted by adding yet another new turf field at the complex? Could be very helpful to the whole program, it's going to make a big difference, we want to make sure that we didn't do this without considering that. Next slide, please. So alternatives considered. We always want to go back, even though there are different ways to do this, the bottom line is, the same people are paying for it, the taxpayers of Madison, which is the reality of all the assets of our community, we choose to live here, and we fund these assets through our property taxes. So we said, one way, the open space recreation and tax fund could do it. We know we're getting about $50,000 a year in field rental income, so it means we've got to come up with another $60,000 a year to cover that $110,000 cost? Well, let's just make a proposal every year to the open space committee, see how it lines up with all the other priorities they have to choose from, and see if it could be funded from there, and get rid of turf user fees entirely. That was one alternative. Second one is general tax funding. Well, our general taxes are covering all our grass fields, they're covering the vast lion's share of all the spend we're doing on our assets. Let's just figure a way, again, we've got $50,000 in user fees, let's take that $60,000 we need to make up the MRC reskining, put it into the DPW budget, and incorporate in the general tax revenues budget process, and get rid of turf user fees. These are assets of the community, let them be funded like other assets of the communities. Third one is, you know, user fees, we've been kind of got used to them. People are used to them, it's not a real big deal. How do our neighbors deal with this? And we went to 10 neighboring communities, shown there, and we found four other towns have them, the towns 15, 17, $20 respectfully. It was interesting, one did it very differently, and that's Chester Mendham. And what Chester Mendham has done is they've washed their hands entirely of maintaining the fields that the programs use, and softball, baseball, they would contract with landscapers, and they would be responsible to cut the grass, keep the fields in working conditions. Their registration fees reflect it, too. If you're a young lady between K and 8, you're paying $250 a year to play softball. That's two and a half to three times what we're spending in town. So again, that's a choice that town made. We didn't think it was a particularly good one, but what do we know, right? So we went back to, you know, and this is where we kind of lined all these up and asked everybody on the Recreation Advisory Committee to vote on them. So what do you think? Majority wins. And the majority says, you know, we're used to user fees. It makes a difference, it builds an explicit connection between the people who use the turf field and an asset, which is a lovely asset, but we do wear it down, and every 10 years, we've got to put a new skin on there. So we said, you know, if we increase turf fees just a little bit, $20 to $25, the families using the facilities, they cover almost 96%, 98%, I'll show you the numbers in a second, and if we are successful in getting another field, we can make a good argument to take those fees up to $40, because there will be another field that has to be reskinned. Next slide, please. When you look at the numbers, how do we come up with them? Well, we took our same registration numbers, and we said, you know, the numbers are always going to go up and down a little bit, but if we go to $25, we'll bring in about $55,000 and change, plus the rental income of 50, we'll bring in $105,000 plus of $110,000. We figure we're covering 96% as our estimate, and we figure we usually get close to $110,000 a year, which means between the rental fees and a slight increase in user fees, we can cover and make the cost of that annual reskining, that we can't do it once, but make the annual cost of that be covered entirely by the people who use it. And why would we go to 40? Well, first of all, if you have another field up there, it's about half the size of what we're looking at right now, so our estimate's be about another $55,000 a year to reskin another half-field, so it's up to 165. Well, if you go to 40 bucks, you increase the number to over $112,000, but you also bring in another program that's not there today, and that's Little League Baseball. And Little League Baseball brings 600 more players onto the turf fields, who take advantage of them, gain the benefit, especially if you remember how much rain we had last spring, because sometimes it's hard to get on the fields. So with that additional increase, more kids and more fees, we cover about 162, 163 of 165,000, or about 98%, which we figure is close enough for an estimate, it would pretty much balance out year in and year out. Next slide, please. So what would it look like? You accumulated a reserve, and this is based on the work that you all did a year ago. Well, you put $270,000 away a year ago. With this year, about $91,000 rolling in, you're at 360. And if we continue to accumulate, again, increase user fees next year, by the time we end 2021, we're probably about $560,000. And as you begin the process to reskin the fields in 2022, well, you need to spend a million and one to do it, a capital asset, but you've got $564,000 sitting there, which kind of knocks that number down pretty significantly, which means you only really need to find another 432, again, taking into fact 2022 numbers also. You don't have to borrow quite as much or use as much of your capital budget. It takes about four or five years to kind of get us back into the positive, and those numbers continue to accumulate into a reserve, and by the end of the decade, you're at 300,000. And by the time 2031 rolls around and you're looking at another 10-year reskining, you're sitting over the half a million dollar mark, and you're ready to kind of have money put away. People using the field, beating up the fields back in 2022 to 2026, they get the benefit of a brand-new field, and they pay for it. Next slide, please. So to kind of summarize it, one is manage the cost in your capital budget planning process and begin planning for it. Make it official that 2022 is when we're going to do it. We think it'll get there without too much of a problem. They bring people in every year just to confirm it's in good shape. We increase the turf fees slightly, and we do that starting spring 2020. So when I send out my softball registration in December, if you think this is the way to go, I'll make sure that $25 is sitting in there, and all our other spring sports will make that $25 go into effect for people that show up starting in March for the spring seasons. If you are successful in your quest to work with the Board of Ed to add another field back there, well, the day that field opens, then we will go from 25 to 40 at that point in time. Again, start the same idea, putting money away to prepare for that 10-year anniversary when that field gets redone. We know it's easy to say a dedicated reserve, but government accounting isn't quite that simple, is my understanding, so we leave that to your CFO and yourselves to figure out the details, because I know it's something you can't necessarily bind future councils to spend money, but you can manage money appropriately to make sure that it does go to this area. And we figured, taking this approach, is the cash flow continues to build, so when you get these big ticket expenses every decade or so to replace the turf, you got most of it covered, and you basically pay it off over the next couple of years, and you start the whole process all over again. Any questions?
So just a little background, a little more information on your comments on the Board of Education conversations, and also, I do have a question, and then I'll get questions from the council. But as most people know, and you, Dave, you covered things very well, that 49 acres was Rockefeller Group property, that was actually in the town of Farm Park. So through our open space, our borrowing, county money, the largest grant that the county ever gave, and green acres, we were able to purchase that land. And a recent conversation I had with a leader of Farm Park lead me to believe they certainly would have pursued at least two office buildings on that site. So not only do we have a fine recreation site, but we've, we kept that development, it's going on Park Avenue from extending to Ridge Dale. So this is a great treasure we have on that site. We have been committed, and we've, these turf fields came through a partnership with the Board of Education. They put a million dollars in, along with our funding, and then fundraising through the MAF, made those turf fields possible. And as Dave pointed out, we're still kind of paying off, because it didn't cover everything. And the conversations now is, we looked at, originally, there was plans for Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 1 being the current MRC, and way back when, we had that Phase 2, which was the land between the high school and the current MRC. And so that's where we're in conversations with the Board of Education. Carmelo Vitale, Pat Rowe, myself serve on the Shared Services Committee, so we've been having these conversations about the borough, the Board of Ed possibly providing the land to borough, providing, taking care of all the improvements, and also making sure, especially with the change in user fees, that we would be able to reskin the fields in the future. And so, we would have the fields used for recreation programs and the high school, all serving the use of Madison. So it would be a great program. So my question, then I'll shut up for a second, maybe. The slide with current situation, estimated spend MRC in grass fields, which, if you go back a couple of slides.
Keep going. Yep. Two more.
The grass field, and I might have missed something, as you said, the grass field maintenance numbers seem awfully, awfully high.
I'll defer to Jim on that one, because he's helped provide those final numbers.
Is that for 2020, that's $750,000, is that?
Mayor, that's a portion of Public Works Parks Department, capital equipment, gasoline, you know, just take Fred Rivera and a couple of the other guys that work almost exclusively on the athletic fields, take their full salary, take their benefits, take the cost of the capital equipment, and so we use that as an estimate.
Okay.
Ryan and I put that together as an estimate.
And so that's very helpful. So it's based on good work, and one of the things that came out from a study we did many years ago, is I think for grass field maintenance, if we were properly maintaining and also doing resting and all that, that number really should be probably a million and north. So by having, you know, that puts this reskining and the cost of the artificial turf in perspective. So now, comments or questions from the council? Pat?
I guess really just one question. If we're going to ask people to increase the registration cost for the spring, what's the latest? The council needs to take action so that all the spring sports can put that into their registration materials for the spring.
I'll speak on my behalf, because I know my system is December 1. As I know, lacrosse will be right around, opening up about the same time, so I'd have to check with Tara and with Shannon, but I'm thinking December 1st would be about the final. I open everything up about two weeks later.
So it sounds like with that, the answer to that question is, if we have consensus from the councils to move forward with the update of the user fees, have that on the agenda next meeting.
Yeah, I think for the, for the short term, it's not a bad idea. You know, when I was the Board of Ed rep to the committee that was working on this, this was an important part of the sort of... this was an important part of the sort of public-private partnership, was that the user fees would help defray the cost to the taxpayers. And I think an increase after, I don't know how many years it's been, is fair and will help us. The next increase, I think, we still have to take a much harder look at the cost of this, I mean, that's assuming we get approval from the Board of Ed. We also take a look at what's currently in the Open Space Fund, what other draws we have on the Open Space Fund, like this building, and then decide what's the appropriate amount for the, if we were gonna go to the next level. But I think overall, the numbers are pretty good, and I commend Dave and the committee for putting all this together for us.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so what we'll do is, we'll draft up ordinance for the increase of user fees and for the, there's a lot of work to do as far as second field, and so as Pat pointed out, that any discussion on that second number is
It's a
To come in the future.
Yeah, our purpose was to put this in context of that. That was the request when I first sat with several people. Don't ignore it, just put it in context, which makes good sense.
And it's very helpful to make sure that as we spend capital dollars to create something, we think about how to maintain it.
Yep. Cool.
All right, thank you very much, Dave.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your patience on getting you to the microphone there.
No worries. Good night, y'all.
All right, Automated Meters and Utility Bill Pay Platform. Jim, our CFO.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make this quick. I talked to council a little bit about this, but we wanted to bring this out in public session, that the Finance Department and Utility Billing Department are looking at a new, a possible new platform or system for customers to use to make payments, and it will make things a lot easier. It's a platform called Invoice Cloud, and this is a preferred platform that works seamlessly with a system that we use for utility billing called Harris Flexa Bill. It includes a number of improvements and enhancements that many people have been asking for over the years. I know, I think everyone on council, I know Pat John, everyone's been asking about this. Gives multiple payment methods. Customers can put in their checking information or credit card information, and their bill will automatically be paid if they give authorization to that. They can even receive a text message ahead of time saying, "We're gonna be debiting your account tomorrow, this amount, okay?" You know, hit, hit reply if there's a problem, or hit okay. It will give the opportunity for paperless billing, which will reduce costs to the Borough and the Borough's environmental footprint. It will, as I said, allow residents to actually pay by text, and then finally it will allow for what's called a budgeted payment plan. That allows someone to say, "I want my utility bill to be averaged out over the course of the year, and I pay an equal amount on a monthly basis." There could be true-ups, but people who want to have on a fixed income, want to have a more balanced, even budgeted payment plan, will have that opportunity to do that. As I said before, they'll actually be able to pay by text. Registered customers with stored remittance information can pay text just by literally responding to the text and saying, "Pay." So if you have your checking account information there, it'll come up and it'll say, "Hey, your bill's due tomorrow." Just type in "pay," and it gets paid. Invoice Cloud offers a lot of efficiencies to the back office, to Donna and Magdalena. Right now, it takes a lot of time to process mailed payments. Yesterday, we received a hundred and seventy-eight, I'm sorry, over two hundred pieces of mail, that's just checks with stubs, and then we received another hundred and seventy-eight bank checks. What's a bank check? If you go onto your bank and decide, "I wanna pay PSENG this amount," you hit send. "I wanna pay the Borough Madison," you hit send. If you hit send to PSENG, it's going to them electronically, because they have a relationship with the banks. If you click send to us, or send to your father, or your son, or whatever, it's gonna be a physical mailed check that goes to them. That mailed check comes to us, and we get, yesterday we got a hundred and seventy-eight of them. There's no payment stub that comes with that, so we pay a little bit of detective work. Typically, they have their account, their account's number in the memo field. That just takes, it takes a tremendous amount of work to do that. It's easier for the customer, it's a little more challenging for us. That will now change with this platform. This platform has a relationship with all the banks, so when they click send, say, "I'm Providence Bank," and I click send to make my payment, it won't come to us as a check anymore. It will come the same way an ACH payment comes in, or a credit card payment comes in, where it's a batch file and a batch deposit. Donna will press one button, and it will take all those payments and post the payments to everyone's account. That's what needs to happen, it needs to say, "Okay, Ashri Bailey's a hundred dollar electric bill was paid, she gets a hundred dollars credit." Maureen's seventy-five dollar electric bill gets posted to her account. All of that posting happens automatically with the press of a button, as opposed to going through all those hundred and seventy-five checks. Yesterday was larger, too, because we had Saturday and then Monday. Bill, the mail kind of all collects, so it's much larger on long weekends. The online payment process, as I said, will be much easier. Customers can pay with electronic deposit. Payments are reported the next day and deposited within forty-eight hours. Paper checks are eliminated, as I talked about. We'll spend much less time processing it. Security, this platform has double data encryption with the highest level of security. The residents' banking information will not be in our care, custody, and control, it will be on this platform. There's always been a question, is any, what information is operable in terms of customers' information in that particular instance, because it's on a separate platform, not residing on our server. We don't have to worry about the security, and we don't have to worry about the public records situation. Are there any questions?
Any questions in this part? Outside of this, it certainly brings us into the twenty-first century. Carmelo, did you?
I think most of us understand this, because most of us are probably doing this already with a lot, with a lot of our payments. I do have a question about the budget, one that's a consistent budget amount. I have a budget with public service, okay? And it's automatically deducted out of my account on a monthly basis. They, at the end of the year, look at my, what the actual would be in comparison to what I have been budgeted for, and then that changes, that amount changes. Are we gonna be able to do the same thing?
Yes, there'll be periodic true-ups or corrections in people's bills. My two kids are out of college, my electric bill has dropped, or in college, my electric bill has dropped, so my payment plan would change.
I just wanna say thank you. I'm not gonna be able to die a happy man now. I've spent five and a half years, and Jim's gonna cover the second half of my happiness in the rest of his presentation, but trying to get us to automate these functions. We have, what, five or six thousand accounts in the utilities?
We have sixty-five hundred electric accounts and fifty-five hundred water accounts. Some are, so we probably have about a total of like seventy-five hundred unique accounts.
So that's, let's divide that by twenty days of the month, and so that means three hundred and some odd. Omealopes get stuffed every month, three hundred every day, three hundred and some odd checks and/or other payments come back every day that people have to manually process, as Jim went through, a lot of the challenges they faced to get things right. All of this will simply bring the information into us in a very seamless fashion, and it'll make our, our back office extremely streamlined. So I think it's great, it's the way the whole rest of the world functions. This is the last place, I don't actually write checks anymore, but I still have to manually go in every month. And then I guess the final question is, it has nothing to do with this, but since the system can do it, can we leverage it for property taxes at some point?
Not this particular system, because it's, this functions with flexible, and our property taxes are processed through the admins system, but obviously towns are looking into various options to make things easier to get the property taxes.
Bingo. Then I will really die a happy man. Thank you very much, Jim.
Our hope is to have this implemented by April 2020, and that requires some purchasing department hurdles to be jumped through, and then we'll be coming back to council and actually asking for permission to enter a contract with them.
Maureen?
Oh, I just wanna point out that from a safety point of view, banks are, banks are moving away from checks, because checks, we've seen here in Madison where seniors have been, you know, contacted and told their, you know, and so this, this takes that scam, that spam, that, that out of commission.
Yeah, I think we need to really point out to people, one of the great ways to have your information stolen is the mail that's sitting in your mailbox.
Yeah.
Those bills, because it has a lot of stuff that you really don't want, or people who stick checks going back out. So if you can go paperless and pay automatically, you know, you still have the risk of the other problems with the internet, but I think you minimize some of the problems you currently have with the way we do things.
You know, I, like Pat, have been, I've been asking for this, I'm thrilled to death. If we could do it faster than April, I'm all for it. But two questions. We use the utility bills a lot, and I joke with you every time you say it's going in in the utility insert, that I haven't opened my actual physical electric bill in months anyway. What are we gonna do to get some of that information out to people that do count on those bills, if they, you know, once most people go to paperless? And then my second question is, is there a way, I'm assuming there's a way within there to print a statement, because things like Real ID require you to have eighteen proofs that you live where you live, and if I've gone paperless, I assume I'm gonna be able to go in and print some sort of statement with my name, address, and utility and all of that stuff.
The purpose of the invoice, the invoice, they will actually make it look, or the bill will make it look almost identical to a bill of ours. You can also come to the Utility Billing Department and say, "Can I have a physical bill, a paperless, but can I have a physical bill printed this month, because I need it to go to the DMV to get my twelve points," or whatever it is, to get, to get that. So absolutely, that can happen.
And as far as communication, I think our award-winning Michael Plessy will make sure that
Just add it to your list.
The information that went out and stuffers will be covered in many even better ways.
New platforms.
Can I just ask, we have some solar users, which has been the bane of the existence of that electric bill. I know it's created some problems. How are you gonna handle that?
So there really is no difference in the way it's handled. If they owe money, they can pay through that platform. If there's a credit, it's gonna say you have a credit in that platform. What Carmelo is saying is, we have about thirty, thirty-five solar accounts that are residential, and it just adds a layer of trickiness in terms of the meter reading, in terms of the understanding how solar works. Somebody goes, "I don't understand. I know my house generated more solar than that." Well, what you're seeing from our read is not what you generated, it's what went back out of your house into the grid. So it's, it's a little tricky from the billing standpoint, but we have it completely worked out, and so I don't see there being any issue with this platform.
And that sounds like a good segue into part two.
That is a good segue, thank you, Mayor. So we're going to talk about the Elster Energy Access Automated Meter Deployment Update. That's mouthful, the smart meters that we're deploying. Here is a map of all of the town where we have deployed meters. We have about, as I mentioned before, about sixty-five hundred electric customers. We need to replace every electric meter in town eventually. We have about fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred deployed. This yellow looks bigger than that percentage of town, but that's because there are parts of town that have a higher density. Why do we choose the southern part of town? Because we have a deployed gatekeeper, and we'll talk about that in a minute, that's collecting the meter reads in that part of town. So we just migrated and started moving that way in terms of deploying the meters. There are a number of one-in-two meters that are not marked on this map, where if we were at a, a new home was being built, or we needed to replace a meter anyway, we replaced meters, we didn't identify each individual piece of property. This just shows the general areas of town where the meters have been deployed. So we have electric meters that are being deployed, and we have water modules that are being deployed. The electric meter is very simple, we go to the house and replace it with another meter. The water module is a little bit different. We're going to be looking to replace water meters, and we're going to be installing this water module. We have about three hundred of them deployed right now as well. They communicate on the same system, and we'll talk about how the system communicates in a couple of minutes. So the electric meter has electricity running in it, so it's always charged, so to say. It has a long-term memory if there's a power outage. The water module has a battery in it, so the water module has a twenty-year life. It also stores the data for a long period of time if there's a communication outage. We're currently reading the meters, as you know, using a handheld device, any of these automated meters. We're currently using this Radix system, this is a very large system. We're gonna be migrating over, hopefully within the next few months, to the Honeywell. It's basically an Android phone, almost like a phone, that will be able to do the same thing. Even when we go with the smart meters, we'll still wanna be able to have that Android system to be able to install, troubleshoot, and verify communication with meters. So how does the communication system work? I think we've heard about this before, it's called a, when we go fully automated, the Energy Access System creates what's called a mesh network, and we have a partially-created mesh network in town already. It uses a gatekeeper which collects the data at some point, some location in Madison, and then from there, that gatekeeper communicates either via cellular or internet connection back to, back to the, back to home. The meters in, that are deployed can actually act as repeaters, and I'm gonna show you how that works right here. Here's a couple of, the gatekeeper's located in the green circle, it's located in a hidden location here in the Borough Hall, and it's, it's just temporarily located here, it'll be located in the general vicinity when it's permanently deployed. But we have a home on, we have a home on Shun Pike that is communicating with a home up towards Midwood Terrace, which is then to another home on Midwood Terrace, then Green Avenue, then back to the gatekeeper. So that's taking one, two, three, four leaps, or four steps to get to the gatekeeper. We're gonna deploy more gatekeepers and probably try to keep that down to one or two leaps, but you can see that there's a meter all the way on the far end of John Avenue, all the way to the very right of the image, leaping over. You can also see the meters up at the top at the MRC and over by the high school that are taking multiple steps and communicating back. The water modules jump on this same communication platform, it's a low-frequency RF, and a fully, fully secured system. So we anticipate deploying four gatekeepers in town, those are the collectors that collect that data. These are the four approximate locations, somewhere around the water tower, somewhere in this part of town, somewhere near the Borough Hall, and somewhere near the, near the high school. We think that deployment will be able to collect all the meters based on the topography of the town and alike, and even if one of those gatekeepers goes down, it should be, as you saw before, right now, we're collecting data from here all the way there. So even if one of the gatekeepers goes down, we're still gonna be able to fully read. If we have a communication failure, Jim Trimble can go out with a handheld and get that read, so it will always be able to get reads. So timing and implementation, we actually can start reading meters with that gateway, that gatekeeper, within the next two months. In other words, instead of Jim Trimble going out with a handheld device and pressing it in front of every house to get the read, we're just gonna press a button, and all the reads are gonna come in for the Commons. Carmelo mentioned, or I think Pat mentioned, that the utility, you can see up there, at the very top of the image, that's the Madison Commons. The utility department went out with Jim Trimble, and they had Meter Appreciation Day, and they installed hundreds of meters over in the Commons. That's one book, and so every person in the Commons gets billed, let's say, on the twentieth day of the month, they're in book twenty. Now, in a couple of months, we're gonna be able to press a button and get all those reads. So that's what we're hoping to do. We're hoping to have ninety percent of the electric meters installed within a year. We're doing this all in-house with Jim Trimble and with part-time meter readers and installers. We have a couple of college students that have stayed on that were going out and installing the meters. Water modules, Pat and I have talked about this, and in meetings with Utility Advisory and others, water modules will be, need to be installed by an outside contractor. We only have three, three staff in our water utility, it's just not possible for them to install these. We wanna do a deployment, we're figuring out the best way to do it right now, and we've talked to some companies, and we'll come back to council with a, with a strategy. There's an argument to be said to deploy them all at one point in time, have a company come in and do it. There's another argument that says, if these things have batteries in them, maybe you should do twenty-five percent of the town now, twenty-five percent of the town next year, and alike. Pat shaking, he doesn't like that idea.
Well, no, we discussed that, and, I mean, there are two things. One, a twenty-year battery is a long time, and in reality, they're not all gonna fail on the same day twenty years from now, they're gonna be spread out over many years. And also, our, our water expert on the Utility Committee, Bill, I can't remember what his last name is, said that twenty years from now, you're not gonna be replacing the batteries, you're gonna be replacing the technology. So it's, the sooner you get it done, the better for a couple of reasons. One, it minimizes having to deal with the reads, which, the water reads are worse than the electric, because a lot of them are still in the basement, and as I always tell people, I found out when I started on council, the most dangerous job in this town is not fire, it's not police, it's not DPW, it's water reader, or meter reader. When I joined the council, there were two meter readers, they were both on disability. That's a lot. The other thing is that, and I found this out myself when my water meter got replaced, and this is something I was told in advance, old water meters read slow. So we're losing a lot of revenue. So we're losing a lot of revenue in the older meters. So the sooner we replace them, the sooner we actually recoup that money. In some respects, I think the thing almost pays for itself in a very short period of time. So my recommendation is still going to be, we press ahead. We will probably do some sort of pilot, just to make sure we, we have the right approach. But Jim has found a couple of companies that do a fabulous job of organizing this, setting up websites so you can schedule our own appointments, and, and really coming into town and going through fairly quickly to get things done. And I think we're better off getting this, you know, sort of biting the bullet and doing it over the course of a year or whatever is reasonable from the vendor's standpoint.
This is probably the third thing on your list that you were hoping to see before you died, too.
Yeah, well, I'm not pressing my luck tonight.
This is a very long list we have to get to before getting rid of Row.
But it's all good stuff for the town.
So benefits, water leak detection. Had a customer not recently that had a very strange water leak. When we're only reading that water meter once a quarter, something can be going on. You can have a sprinkler system that can be leaking in your backyard for days or weeks, and you don't know it because it's just going into the ground. Or a toilet in the basement that's constantly running. We'll actually be able to, the system will notify us and say, something's going on, and there's a constant consumption at 3:00 in the morning in these particular homes. So we think something's, we think something's up. It will also obviously help with reduced theft with any sort of theft of water or electric. Outage management will mean quicker repairs. Right now, if you're out to, out to dinner and a branch falls during this nor'easter and takes out your individual power line, the utility's not going to know about it until you get home and call. With this new system, we're going to know while you're out to dinner, and we may be even repairing, you come home, and the only way you'll know that we did it was the microwave is flashing because the clock needs to be reset. So it'll be quicker repairs, less overtime, and better coordinated repairs with the outage management on the electric. Reduced staff time for reading, more accurate reads, and ability to do final reads from the office. We have a number of people that are moving in and out every month, and I'm looking at Carmella because she knows, because she's a Realtor. We have a number of people that move in and out every month, and it takes quite a bit of time, and the meter reader's time, and the utility billing time. Now, with this new system, Donna's going to be able to go, oh, you're moving out? Type into the computer, get the immediate read, they come in and pay for it, and probably be able to do that online, too. And then the increment data on the electric consumption will permit time of use rates. Right now, it's 19 cents a kilowatt, it's about 18 cents a kilowatt hour, summer, winter, day, night. We pay a lot more for electricity in the summer than we do in the evening or, in the evening in the fall and spring. So this will allow us to better map our costs to, to what we charge customers, and then customers can make that economic choice of deferring their dishwasher, deferring their consumption of electricity to a time when it was cheaper. That in turn helps reduce our carbon footprint because our capacity costs, which are costs on, for peak days, are really driven by larger, older power plants. And if we can reduce our capacity costs, we can reduce the, our carbon footprint. So with that, I just want to say special thanks to Jim Trimble, to Donna Carey, to Magdalena Marterano, and to everyone in Electric Utility and Water Utility for all their support, and the council for all your support.
And Jim also.
Yes, thank you. Very good update, and just to reinforce what you said towards the end there as far as time of use. One of the conversations we had and what created the dividend, and as many people know, that I would have preferred to call it a rate adjustment because, you know, we were in different contracts. We talked about, is it time to redo the whole rate structure? And said, no, with smart meters, we can redo, we should be redoing it at that point. So we can reward people that are doing off-peak use of their power and so on. So the dividend rate adjustment kind of brought the rates down until we can have this time of having a whole new structure. So I would anticipate, and again, to, you know, whatever we can do to speed up both projects is, I think, very important, to get that 100%, because then we can put that new structure in, and we can have a, you know, families saving money by smart thing and doing the right thing for the environment. So, Deb?
Just a quick question, and I think, Pat, you may have alluded a little bit to it. With the, the water and it being an outside contractor, what, I guess, how much notice are people going to get that they're going to do this? And then I know, like, I live in a duplex, and both water meters are on the other side of the house. So not only do we have to coordinate us, but we have to coordinate with them and make sure they're, so it just, I just want to make sure people are given notice, and it's not a, they put a thing on my door on Monday saying, oh, by the way, I'm coming tomorrow, hope somebody can be home from work.
Well, that, that's all part of what, what Pat was talking about in terms of the technical specifications. How many touchpoints do we want to have with the customer before we start to get upset? The companies that we talked to will be able to tell us, on this date, we, we sent a letter. On this date, we hand-delivered a card and hung it on the door. On this date, we came back and knocked on the door a second time. On this date, we sent a second letter. At what point do we start to get crabby and say, if you don't do this, there's, you're going to be subject to an additional charge or something? They're, they're professionals at this, these companies that we've talked to, they have in very impressive systems to interact with the customers that will email and give customers an opportunity to select certain dates, and they're selecting certain dates because they're going to be in your neighborhood on those dates, and it's most efficient for their men not to go from one part of town to another, to another, to another, but stay in a particular area. They'll have Saturday times if there's issues with access, and they will have text reminders, don't forget, we're coming tomorrow, don't forget, and then another text reminder, we're coming in an hour. So people, their goal is to install these. They don't want to have to knock on the door any more times than they have to. So the systems that they have are very efficient to make sure they get in the house, install the module, and to be honest with you, install a lot of water meters. There could be times when we're actually, the valve for the resident doesn't shut off properly. They have the ability to use, to actually freeze the pipe temporarily, which stops the flow of water. They can change the meter and then, and then let that thaw out. And so their goal is to change these water meters. They'll own that change. There'll be a warranty for 30 days. So if that thaws out and all of a sudden water starts shooting out, it's not our, we don't own that, that installation company owns it. So there's, there's a lot to think about in those technical specifications, so we definitely want to do a pile.
And the follow-up to that, I'm hoping that it's not Cablevision or Verizon, where we'll be there somewhere between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. Good luck, and that we can get them to shrink that window. There has to be a window. I don't think, you know, they're not going to give you a, I'm going to be there at 8:10, but if we can get shorter windows so that people that can make arrangements, maybe we can do it that way.
They're, they'll, if they're changing water meters on my block and I'm not on the schedule, they're still going to knock on my door. If they can, oh, can we come in right now? They're very good at making sure they get into locations, and it's not an all-day window. I think it was a three-hour window for installation. So.
Maureen?
Would, I mean, talking, you know, getting as, getting as many
Yeah, microphone.
Oh, sorry. Would, would we perhaps set up an incentive? Like, if, if you arranged to have the meter put in before December 15th, you would get $10 off your first water bill?
We're actually going to go the other way and say, because there are some residents, there are two residents that did not want a smart meter on their house because they were just concerned for whatever reason. And eventually, we'll be coming to council and saying, we need, we now need to go and manually read them. There needs to be a, a cost to that. Same situation, if people are not letting us into their house, it's already in the code that we can, we can levy a fine or a fee. We had someone who would not let us into their house for four years. It turned out they were someone who just had a lot of stuff, I think. Nice way of putting it. And we finally got in there when we sent, like, the third, we are shutting your water off, and there's, you're going to receive a heavy fine. Nothing was wrong, but we need, we need to see the meters every once in a while. We need to get in there. So same situation with that. I don't think we would offer an incentive, but we'd offer, we'll get crabby after a while.
Pat?
I think, though, the key part is that we'd be hiring somebody who has a full infrastructure to take care of the scheduling and giving you the ability to, you know, once you've been notified that you need to fit into some window, you pick the day, the time, and the time of the day. We should get pretty good cooperation in a town like Madison. And I think if we, as long as we have like a text field or something, Jim, where they can add any notes, like, I live in a duplex, and you're going to need to coordinate, or I'm going to need to help you coordinate with somebody else, it'll help them out. And I think that, that's a lot better than us trying to do ourselves. As Jim said, we only have a three-man staff who has to maintain the whole system. We'd have to build our own setup to, to schedule these, and we'd get kind of crazy. But there are people who do this for a living, and I think they're very good at it from what Jim has been able to find out from talking to a lot of towns I've worked with.
I just asked a question. Jim, let's go back to electric meters.
Don't we go backwards picture-wise?
No, I don't want to say anything. I want to just ask you a question. You're saying that there's approximately 1,400 that have been done already, and we have 6,500
Mm-hmm.
Customers? How long do you think it'll take for the electric meters to be finished?
By the, within a year. Within a year at our current rate. We started out slow. Like I said, Jim and Tina gave us men, and we did 250 a day. So I think we can, I think we'll have it fully deployed, I think we'll have it 90% deployed within a year. We'll have the system working in a matter of months where it's reading some of the meters. So we've been taking an incremental approach because we wanted to make sure these communication systems are working. Right now, we have 250 water modules deployed. There are a few that are not communicating with the system, and we don't understand why. I don't want to, I always said, you know, we're, we're dating the company. Now we're engaged with this company. Before we get married, I want to make sure everything works.
So going back to the, the one year, if we were able to get 100% done in two months, but your comfort level still might be one year to have a fully implemented system with a, being ready for a rate change, you know, I'm just questioning whether, you know, accelerating it makes a difference, or maybe it doesn't make a difference.
We can look to accelerate the, the electric meter installation as well. The companies that do water meters can do electric meters. They're, they're so much easier, and some companies can do electric. The vast majority of these companies typically deal in water and some in gas. So there's not many municipal electric utilities, smaller electric utilities that would do that. But we could, it's, it's an easier process. So if we temporarily hired a couple of people, we could also accelerate that, that process as well. We really, over the last six months, wanted to make sure this is absolutely working because we don't want to spend all this time and money installing 5,500 water meters and modules and 6,500 electric meters, and the system's not really working.
Yeah, once, once we're at that finish line, I think, let's get full speed ahead, I think is the, yeah.
Yeah, I think the good news is Jim Trimble's the one who's mainly doing the installations, I believe. He's also still reading meters. As he starts to convert the town over, it's, you get this kind of cascading effect because he goes from 100% of the meters to 90, 80, 70, and now he has more and more time to do more and more meters every day. So I think the pace will pick up. I think the other thing we're needed to do is next year, especially in the summertime, with the meters that are out there, to start to really take, drill down onto the data, maybe bring somebody in to help us take a look at it. Because if we really want to be in a position in 2021 to start to shift, potentially shift to a time-of-day cost model for the summertime, which I think is the only time it really is going to make much of a difference, we're going to need to do that analysis next, with next summer's data.
Yeah, and, and I will, of course, take my cautious approach of, if our, if eventually we're going to get to a rate structure where it's 12 cents and 22 cents, I'm going to want to start by going, doing this way and, and work our way to where we get to the right place as opposed to just doing it all at once because I'm cautious.
Well, I think we'll have to take a look at how big a surplus we have at the time and, and make sure that we're not going to have a giant dividend the year after. But anyway.
And we, we are collecting increment data right now. We have over a year's worth of increment data on our 50 largest customers
Yeah.
Right now, because the, the communication system isn't fully integrated. We actually go out with a laptop and an optical coupler every four months, plug into that meter and download 15-minute increment data from Quest, or from, from Allergan and Realogy and the Bowling Alley and other large users.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Jim. Great work.
Thank you. Yes, Jim.
We're moving forward here. Ordinance for hearing, will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council held Monday, September 23, 2019. They were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
I call up ordinance for the second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title, ordinance 47-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison prohibiting the use of plastic bags and regulating the use of paper bags by retail establishments within the Borough of Madison.
My open hearing for ordinance 47. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Scene one, yes. Please state your name, your address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, and I will give you a one-minute grace period.
The pen doesn't seem to be working. My name is Claire Whitcomb. I live at 12 Fairwood Road. It's a very good day, I hope. I just looked up an email I sent to Bob and Maureen, and, oh, and Carmella, on January 12th. And I just wanted to put it on their radar that the Chaddams and were interested in working on a plastic bag ordinance, and that we, we thought it might be a big lift. And I wrote, and, you know, I hadn't dug into it. It wasn't anything I'd really been prepared to, to know a good deal about. And I got an email back from Bob that he talked to Mayor Harris, and he thought this was something good to, to take on. And I want to say that it's just been an incredibly positive experience working with these regional towns, having the Plastics Forum we had in, in May. We had 100 people at 10. We had seven or eight mayors. We had lots of council people. Someone drove up from Flemington. This has really become an interesting way of working on environmental issues because water flows through town boundaries. You know, the environment affects us all, and the, the impact of plastic pollution doesn't stop at the Madison Town Line. And Harding looks like it's going to take this, up this ordinance. Livingston seems to be taking it up. Summit, Berkeley Heights, I mean, I can't even keep up with the kind of list of towns that are, that are, are doing this work. And it's a lot of hard work. I will mention that we won an award from ANJAC for our Plastic Free Week. So, you know, you have to do a lot of education. I just wanted to mention, because I know there was a, a conversation with Quick Check, I just wanted to state what the definition of reusable bag is and make sure that that all retailers understood what it was. It's any bag with, also, the reason why this definition was carefully crafted is because there's a lot of knockoffs of plastic, thicker plastic bags that don't solve the, the problem that we're trying to address of, of moving people to truly reusable bags. So reusable bag is defined in the ordinance as any bag with handles that is specifically designed and manufactured to withstand repeated use over a period of time and is made from cotton cloth or other washable fabric, polyester, polypropylene, or durable material of, or plastic that is 10 millimeters thick and meets the following criteria. Has a minimum carrying capacity, minimum capability of 125 or more uses, carrying 22 or more pounds over a distance of at least 175 feet. Is machine washable or made from material that can be cleaned and disinfected. So hopefully, this works, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting.
Mayor, I move ordinance 47-2019.
Second, just quick discussion. Chatham Borough did have their hearing and passed it on second hearing last night. Chatham Township passed theirs last week. Morris Township is on the verge of introducing, because they only meet once a month. They're spoiled, I guess. So our regional effort is, can show that in the home, home rule capital of the world, that New Jersey towns can work together and really make an impact and make it easier on the residents. The, there is no change in the ordinance as, since it has been introduced the way it was, and just the, what the Quick Check concern was, the ordinance does say shall provide a paper bag, and Quick Check wants to get out of the bag business except for reusables altogether. And so they would prefer not to give up storage. And so that's something we'll look at, and if we need to tweak, we shall. Any other discussion?
Well, just one thing to follow on what you're talking about, Bob. I think this ordinance takes effect the first of April?
March.
March.
First of March, okay. So if we're going to make any changes, we would need to do them no later than maybe January, so everybody would have additional time to deal with it. So, you know, if people are out there and think that there's any other tweaks that we need to fine-tune this, they have about two months to get back to us and let us know what other things we should be considering if we're going to make any final changes.
Yep. And it's great cooperation between our towns and environmental commissions. There'll be a lot of communication going on, I'm sure. There'll be a lot of communication going on, I'm sure. So, thank you. Any other comment?
I just make a comment. You know, I've, I've been in a couple of delis in the last month or so, and I'm very surprised that, you know, they're going to paper straws. And, you know, it's just like little tiny, you know, I, I call it like a drip campaign. And when you see just a small thing like that happening, a little at a time, there's hope. You know, I, I sent you the ordinance from Kiwa Island, South Carolina. They, they just passed an ordinance that said there's no more plastic bags. There's, they only use paper straws. They use paper containers. It's extraordinary because they have so much to lose because the, the plastic is just killing everything in their, their ocean front. I mean, they have lots of turtles and stuff like that. So it's not only here. I, you know, I think it's wonderful that we're doing it, but people, I think across the country are starting to see this. So, you know, you just have to kind of keep going and, you know, have that little drip campaign and make sure everybody that is serving with just plastic, just the paper straws, you know. It just makes a difference. So, guys did a good job.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 47-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 48-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for electric vehicle charging stations.
I open hearing for ordinance 48. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 48-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 48-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And now we move on to next item, invitation for discussion number two. This is when you may comment on any topic. Same rules apply. Please step forward, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you a one-minute grace to four. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward.
Good evening. My name's Tedla Strange, not a resident, Madison. Address is 43 Prospect Hill Road, Catabackville. That's New York. This is way off topic, and it's not good news. So, is it okay? I've entitled this "Genocide by Scalpel" because that's a title given by one of the investigators into forced organ harvesting in China. Their updated research concludes China's hospitals transplant between 60,000 and 100,000 vital human body organs each year. But China's no real organ donation program. Here in the US, with the most sophisticated organ transplant system in the world, patients can wait two to three years just for matching organ to become available. In China, the waiting time is measured in weeks. An organ transplant tourist to China, including one from Madison, can arrange a specific date for their operation. But that effectively means that someone is dispatched on their behalf on that date. It's a cultural taboo to donate one's organs after death in China. So what's the source of all these organs? Translation of these facts equates to tens of thousands of prisoners of conscience each year being killed for their organs. Most of these prisoners of conscience are Falun Gong practitioners, but also Tibetans, Wiggins, and house Christians. They're routinely blood tested and the organs examined while held in China's forced labor camps, detention centers, and black jails. I have a quote, "On June 13th, 2016, the US House of Representatives unanimously passed Resolution 343, which in its summary section, quote, condemns the practice of state-sanctioned forced organ harvesting in the People's Republic of China," close quote. The European Parliament has also passed similar resolutions. This has been happening for about 20 years. There's still a deadly silence on this issue, and that's why I come before you, the elected and respected representatives of the community, to echo the heavy burden of this genocide as acknowledged by the House. China is total control of its own media and way beyond that. It comes down to word of mouth, too, to divulge what's happening. Many dedicated researchers have gathered an enormous amount of data from current and archived hospital websites, local media reports, telephone surveys, and other evidence for the over 1,000 hospitals in China that perform these organ transplants. Some books are now being written, and documentaries have been produced with more comprehensive information. So I brought along a little package of information for your kind attention and a proclamation request.
Okay, thank you. You can give that to the clerk. Appreciate your comments, education. Anyone else, anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Wednesday, November the 13th, 2019. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 49-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $140,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the construction of the police, Madison Police Firearms Training Facility.
Mayor, I move ordinance 49-2019.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditures is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move R285-2019 through R304-2019.
I'll second.
Any council discussion or any that needed to be pulled? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditures is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move R285-2019 through R304-2019.
I'll second.
Any council discussion or any that needed to be pulled? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Will the clerk please read the voucher registry?
Current fund, $291,651.57. General capital fund, $273,023.47. Electric operating fund, $165,586.51. The electric capital fund, $4,244.17. Water operating fund, $39,453.34. And the trust, $65,374.85. Total is $839,333.91.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
I'll second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
All right, new business. I have one appointment and one update. Recreation, for the Recreation Advisory Committee, Shannon Salmon, 45 Pomeroy Road, for unexpired one-year term through December 31st, 2019. I ask, request council confirmation, please.
Mayor, we move confirmation of Shannon Salmon for the Recreation Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just an update with, we have what we have been calling the committee committee with a group that is reviewing committees. Ben Wolkowitz had taken the leadership on that, and obviously, we need to finish the work. So I've asked Carmella Vitale to, to take the leadership to bring it to the finish line, and Carmella and Pat, Rowe and I met today to kind of outline, to get to the deadline, along with Deb Cohen and Cincinnati Committee. So look forward to, some of the work may go into the new year, but there's some committees we want to get to the finish line this year or so. With that?
Mayor, I move to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Well done. Thanks.